I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. We don't have a chair or vice-chair tonight here, so first business action would be someone to nominate, someone to serve as acting chair for the evening, and then we'd need to vote on that nomination.
I nominate Dan Godak.
Support.
Our nominations are closed. I need them to vote on the nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, unanimous. Have fun.
Sounds great, thank you. Thanks for the honor. Since this meeting has already been called to order, I always like to have everybody introduce themselves. Does that give Gary a minute to catch his breath?
Ran up the stairs.
Starting at my left.
Gary Casada.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Dan Godak, Acting Chair.
Tim Twain, Community Development Director.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you all. Next item up is approval for the minutes for September 11th, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
The movement, Shiner.
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any comments, corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes passed. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items. During this meeting it will be, there's only one public hearing, they'll be given an opportunity to speak during that item on the agenda, but if there's someone here that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda, this would be the time. Is there anyone that would like to speak to non-agenda items? Seeing none, close public comment. Brings us to D., New Business, Public Hearing, Special Land Use, Site Plan, SP 181025. To construct a rooftop addition, expand rooftop terrace of two-story mixed-use building, ground-level medical office, retail store, and two second-level dwelling units at 32686 Woodward Avenue. Does your question?
Planning Commission members may recall that you originally saw and approved this development in 2016 as a special land use and site plan approval for a two-story building with an associated accessory parking lot. The frontage of Woodward is zoned general business, and the parking lot that's been developed is in one family residential and was approved through the residential accessory parking lot provisions of the ordinance, went up to the City Commission to receive that approval. As you indicated in the read-in, the petitioner is proposing to construct a addition to the roof to basically have a third floor. That addition is a little over 1,000 square feet, 1,014 according to the dimensions, with a height of additional 14 feet, 7 inches. The terrace with the expansion would be a total of 3,309 square feet. As we indicated in the report, the petitioner has indicated that the addition, as well as the terrace area, is intended to be for the use of employees or the residents that would occupy the residential units on the second floor in that regard. Basically, I'll highlight some of the issues regarding the special land use and code provisions that come into play with the addition. The addition would bring the building height to slightly over 43 feet. The maximum allowed in general business is 30 feet. Variance from the zoning board of appeals would therefore be necessary, so you'd have to allow that to exceed and go forth in that regard. In addition, the parking requirement with the additional square footage and the potential use of that space, the site previously complied with 32 parking spaces, one of which was eliminated during the building permitting process in order to deal with stormwater detention, so that was done administratively, brought the overall supply to 31 spaces. With the addition that's being proposed, code requirements bumped that requirement to 46 spaces. Therefore, there's a technical deficiency of 15 spaces, and that would also require zoning board of appeals approval going forward. As you also indicated, the second building structure that's being proposed is carports in the parking lot area that's zoned one family residential. Permanent structures such as carports and garages are not allowed in the residential accessory parking lot provisions under the ordinance in terms of the design, so that would also need a variance to allow that to occur if you chose to allow it go forward in that sense. Also, the replacement is in the setback area to the residence to the east. While the parking lot was approved out in that front area, again, structures and carports were not allowed, so that would be technically another variance that if this moves through the planning commission and city commission would have to grant permission to the zoning board to grant those waivers. So those are the ordinance provisions that are not being complied with specifically. In addition, you'll see that we've highlighted some things that have not been completed or not consistent with the approval, the prior approved site plan in terms of landscaping primarily. I can touch on those, I think, when we go through site plan approval if you'd like, rather than doing it as part of the special land use. Also, some of the right-of-way improvements at the corner haven't been completed. There's also a question of the height of the light that was installed in the parking lot that we'll need more detail on. And then there were some discrepancies between the various sheets that were submitted that need to be corrected in terms of where things were, in terms of the waste receptacle, the generators and things like that, they're not consistent from sheet to sheet. So there are several things like that that we can touch on when we go through site plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. Is there any questions for Mr. Twain from the side of the table? Mr. Douglas?
Am I correct in my memory that as of perhaps a year ago, this parking lot was an unpaved mess that the adjacent homeowner would call and complain about on a regular basis?
Yes, we did get complaints, yes.
Yeah. So when did they pave it?
I don't have an actual date. The petitioner may know exactly when they paved it.
So, I mean, I'm just sort of happy to have the absence of those rightfully aggrieved emails in my in folder, so thank you at least for that.
Any other questions at this time?
Just, Gary? Real quick, I just was a little clarification. You just said, as you said in your report, that the terrace is, expanded terrace would be 3,309 square feet, but you're just talking about a terrace that is a deck there. Because the actual building, it looks like it would only be less than that that they want to build on top, it would be 847 usable. I just want to get a clarification. There's only 847 interior space that they want to build on top. The rest of it is a deck?
Yeah, the gross square footage, I believe, was slightly over 1,000 of the enclosed space. The rest of it is an open terrace deck, if you call it.
And that doesn't count, or does count for parking?
No.
Only the interior space counts for parking?
Right.
Any other questions? Seeing none, does the petitioner hear on this? Please step forward and tell us about your plan.
Want to come up? I'm Jonathan Zaden, we're the owner of the building, and I think we've, you know, built a nice project. We've come to some, while we did this, this is my first big development project, we built it for my medical office and tried to maximize, you know, some of the efficiency of the building because of the cost of the land and the parking lot and the detention and so on and so forth. We then, you know, decided at one point we were just going to use it for our own storage area up in the top and put a top floor. We couldn't do that, and we chose to do it residential. And when we built it out residential, we found that there's a few items that make it a little bit difficult for leasing the space. One is that, you know, we have two residential units, they're very, very nice units. I brought my real estate agent just to kind of attest to what's going on with it. And the units, I mean, I think are going to be grade A units, they're like 3,000 feet. I think you've seen the plans. They're very high ceilings, nice accompaniments, but the people that want to lease it all want to have covered parking. And so that's one of the issues that have come up, you know, over and over again, is that, you know, we like the space, but, you know, the potential for parking and in the wintertime having snow on our cars in Michigan is difficult. And it's, you know, kind of a hardship that we were facing, but we just didn't, I didn't anticipate that initially. Okay, so that would be number one. The second thing I'd like to address is the shape of the lot. We would have people come and weed-whack it, but we couldn't get anyone to cut it because there was a lot of concrete pieces in there, and that was a difficulty. And the city began to cut that lot initially, and my wife paid it every time on time. It just was so difficult to get any contractor to go out there and make that. And we tried to push this project along to get, you know, where we were at, and we built the parking lot as well, I think, as we could have built it. It's exactly the spec, other than some landscaping issues, which we really didn't, to be honest with you, pay as much attention to because we wanted to make it maintenance-free for the neighbors. We didn't want to have any overgrowth of shrubs or any of those things down the road, so we put more stone than some of the things, I guess, that were on the initial plan. And it was, you know, Bill and I, Bill is my builder, didn't realize the difficulties that we might face by changing that, we just thought we were making the best decision for the area. Third, one of the things that people expect that are leasing this space is that, you know, they, one of the things that attracts them is this roof deck area. You know, the size of the roof deck, it sounds, you know, large, 3,300 square feet. And to be honest with you, I'm not familiar with that plan, but the truth of the matter is that we just want the entire roof to be cleaned out. We want it to look like a really great space for our residents, and we really think that we've really thought through it. And I wrote a nice letter, I mean, kind of explaining what my thoughts were for the space, but in all seriousness, we think with Peter, after talking, most of the people that come through believe that, you know, if they have that deck, they would use it just for the residents, and if there was shared access to anyone else, including any employee, that would not be a good scenario. So we plan on intending that for a place to be up at the top of the roof for our residents. Here's the thing, you know, it's windy up there, we have to store equipment up there. We don't have a lot of storage space in the building. So we, you know, originally proposed this item for storage in a bathroom area and so on and so forth, and then a workout area for our residents. So, you know, that envelope of size is what seems to work out the best for that, it might be a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger, whatever it is, but, you know, that's the idea behind that roof area. I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that that would increase the parking of the space, and, you know, I see no hardship from a parking perspective. There'd be no way that we would use it for any, you know, bar area. I think one of the neighbors had talked to me at one time that that's probably what they're worried about, and I said, "Well, I don't," you know, I mean, obviously that's not the case. And I think, as you guys can see, I'm sure all of you have driven by the building, we've certainly added to the community. I mean, I haven't in any way, shape, or form spared any expense on the build of the building or the architectural detail. And I also, even for the neighbors, you know, Charlene, we put the wall in, and when we put the wall in, I had them brick the wall in the color of brick of their home. So, you know, it's not something I needed to do, and I think all the neighbors, I mean, quite frankly, that I've heard from have been nothing but thankful of the project to date. So I don't know if you'd like to address any of those issues? Peter? Just from a leasing perspective?
Sure.
I brought my real estate agent because I realize that you guys don't necessarily, you know, lease these spaces, but Pete's an, you know, experienced broker, and as a result of that, I felt like he would give us a little bit of color to what type of tenants that he's seeing for this space.
Good evening. My name is Peter Noonan. I live at 1829 Roseland, a 28-year resident of Royal Oak. My history extends much further than 28 years because I purchased my Roseland home from my grandparents. So my Roseland Street in Royal Oak has been a part of my life for over 50 years. This is my community, my daughters go to school, my church is here, I love Royal Oak, go Bulldogs. I'm a partner of Bailey Schmidt and a boutique real estate company located in Birmingham, Michigan, and have worked there since 1998. My principal focus in business is high-end office and luxury apartments. We currently represent Van Essener Capital on their new build at the corner of Oak and Woodward, designed by Victor Soroki with an eye towards unparalleled excellence. We represent 255 East Brown Street, a 60,000-square-foot Birmingham icon and home to Wells Fargo. We also represent the Stryker family at the corner of Maple and Woodward, the Greenleaf Building, arguably the genesis of high-end luxury apartments for all of Michigan and years ahead of its competitors. The Greenleaf Building completely changed the nature of apartment, luxury apartment living and set a bold new standard, which many at the time thought was unreachable. This one project has given rise to numerous others and has brought a dynamic to Birmingham that has benefited the city in many wonderful ways. From the very beginning of this project, the owners wanted a project that reflected the surrounding community, complementing its neighbors, while being a standard bearer for others. I mentioned this building is both a source of pride, but more importantly, because 32686, the Woodward, is on track to follow in such footprints, bringing to life a magnificent building and living environment. Bringing to life is a good analogy because that's what Jonathan Zaden and the people of Woodman's Excellence do. He is an extremely successful OB-GY in practice with Holistics Medicine and Midwifery Practices. In many ways, the Woodward is a labor of love. He could have stayed in Birmingham, but he wanted a more inclusive and dynamic location for the people he serves. Early on, he chose to reach out to his Buckingham neighbors. He listened to those concerns and those of the city. He spent considerable sums to beautify the site, the building, landscaping, and lighting. Architecturally and structurally, this project, along with a few others, are changing Woodward Corridor into one of the most dynamic retail corridors anywhere in southeast Michigan. And now coming full circle, he endeavors to create two luxury apartments, completely unique to the market. The two apartments themselves are unheard of, 3,500 square feet, 14-foot ceilings in the common areas, 10-foot ceilings in the private areas. He's building kitchens and bathrooms that tenants at this level demand, and now he's looking to complete a vision where the resident has covered parking and an outdoor sheltered access, private and unto themselves. Our leasing efforts are geared towards a very special tenant. Those seeking apartments of this size and pricing are few and far between. Often, that potential tenant owns homes elsewhere or is looking to downside or simplify their lifestyle, and they have the discretionary income for rent at this level. However, there's an expectation of enclosed parking, privacy, and luxury amenities that come at this price point. First, covered parking is a must for luxury apartment living. Tenants have so many choices today, and they've come to expect this amenities. It is both a safety as well as a maintenance issue. Covered parking has become a mainstay for business today. When we go to downtown Royal Oak, covered parking is everywhere because that's what we do to entice our office and retail tenants and customers. Carports and garages are available in almost every segment of Royal Oak's apartments today, and with only two apartments, the Woodward, enclosed parking would have limited impact on the site and surrounding visual sightlines. The second, and in this instance, with equal impact, is the addition of a rooftop sheltering space. With only two tenants, this area is intended to be a very special amenity and truly an extension of the tenants' private residence. It is abundantly clear from market feedback, one would need to feel comfortable and safe at any time in the day or night accessing this area. As such, there would only be tenant access to the elevator and roof access doors. Additionally, to heighten this amenity, Dr. Zaden is looking to build within the shelter area, a bathroom and a small area for furniture. This amenity would provide for year-round experience, especially considering Michigan's inclement weather. It has become abundantly clear through market feedback that these two amenities are critical to successful leasing this project. The approval of these items will ultimately encourage others to build, redevelop, and repurpose buildings along the Woodward Corridor, each one supporting and encouraging the next and adding to the vibrant current and future image that Royal Oak proposes for itself. Thank you very much, and I'm available for any kind of questions you might have.
I'm the general contractor, so if you guys have got any complaints, come on at me. Because I've heard a lot of different things, especially from the neighbors that run in. We're trying to work with every one of them.
Can we get your name, sir, for the record, sorry?
I'm sorry, Bill Hudson. H D F. What? I'm J.L., but no relative. I'm the little culprit that started up with Dr. Zaden, just letting him know because I was up on top of the roof at the time when we're trying to complete the area, making sure that everything was according to the design. And of course, I had a piece of plywood to kind of fly right across the roof and balance it by my, and that really stirred it. So my question came to Dr. Zaden was, you know, you're thinking about taking and putting up some decking and everything up there and possibly some furniture, where are you going to put that? Because you don't have any space downstairs in the other areas, as far as the lease area is concerned. And that's where it first started. We came to the bank, we came with creature clay, started, tried to try and what we could now do. I had questions to ask, and as well as far as the parking was concerned, we just right away across from 10 to that parking lot. I can say one thing, there was a lot of areas, and Dr. Zaden didn't even hesitate because I had to come to him and say, "This is, it was filled in with the parking lot as far as stone, gravel, things had been removed." I come to find out to the point where it cost them an additional $20,000 to take and remove all the spoil that was in there because it was so much contaminated that we had to take and bring new soil, 21AA, compassion-wise, and believe me, you've got a very, very solid parking lot. The sickest is solid as far as concrete is concerned, but not even considered to be one as far as blacked out. Doctor's right, because as far as the brick wall was concerned, there was costs involved as far as trying to take and match the brick before with all the neighbors that have gone on the ground. I dealt with every one of them. They were nice people to take a deal with and everything, and one of the questions that they came across to me was, "I hear now that there's, they're planning to take and go ahead and put some canopy and carports going in there." Says, "Don't tell me you're going to do something to apply abuse, and now we're going to have a bunch of rust that's going to start happening." I says, "Let me ask you a question. Do you think that Dr. kind of shared his costs to the point and tried to take and cheat in any way?" And I don't think he did, because there's a lot of money that they put into that building because the metal panel just alone in his structure, he completed a whole, he did not have it designed, but the whole wall that was continuing all the way through. He's the one also that added the brick wall that was down, coming all the way around in the wing scold on the exterior. There is nothing, as far as I'm concerned, cost-wise, or shit, it held back in any way, just from Dr. Zaden. He did not stop in any way. He proved a lot of the things that was extra. And of course, as far as the canopy going over, I call it a canopy, but as far as the carports, they would be done in a little room. It's going to be a little room, there ain't going to be no rusting or anything like that. I don't think he's put anything in cheaply in that building yet, and definitely know that it won't happen. In fact, that is a few people who approve. Aside from that, if there's any questions that can help you out, please don't hesitate to ask.
Sounds good.
I'd like to just finish up. So this was a passion of mine to build this building, and I think we built a really nice building in Woodward. This finish, what we're asking for finishes it. I don't think it's a hardship on the community at all. I think our neighbors are supportive of us. I think they've seen what we're going to do with it, and it's a place that I'm going to occupy myself with my own business, close to Beaumont on the Royal Oak Corridor. So, you know, I'm, we're certainly not going to put a parking structure or a carport that isn't of good quality. We've already been researching it, looking at them on the internet to find out what's the, what's the most modern-looking, you know, carport that we can place that will match the building. And from the, you know, view going down Woodward, we will be, you know, very sure that there's, you know, that the building envelope construction matches the building on the outside with the glass and metal panels or, you know, however, that's going to all come to play. So, I mean, we're, you know, the goal is to build something great. That was my goal, and I think we've achieved it. I've gotten a lot of great feedback, and this is the final steps to just get it completed and leased.
Sounds great. You gentlemen can have a seat for a second? This is a public hearing, I'd like to open up that.
Sure.
Great. Thank you. Since we have a public hearing on this, I'd like anybody here to speak on this development. Please raise your hand. Yes, there in the back?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Solomon. I live at 4122 Grandview. My home is the home directly behind the parking lot, if you will. So if I'm looking out my backyard beyond the brick wall is the parking lot. And I apologize, I came here late. I'm actually not even familiar quite yet where the carport is planning on being placed. If anyone can answer that?
You circle it up there, Mr. Twain.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up in the northwest corner.
It will be within the previous Buckingham home footprint, presumably?
They're going to be in a gray area at Buckingham near the alley.
Okay.
This area.
I came here this evening just to generally voice a couple. I would call them mild concerns. Number one, I believe this site plan was developed prior to Dr. Zaden purchasing it from the prior business owner for the business on Woodward. Most, if anything, was not technically modified for his plan, to my understanding. The dimensional brick of the wall was per plan, and we've been very satisfied with the aesthetic and the workmanship of that wall. I brought to Bill, the general contractor's, attention early on in the construction of the brick wall that the, when the city approved the brick wall, I had come and voiced some concerns, and I had worked with the initial planning and said, "Hey, listen, you have my vote if, basically, the back of my backyard will be landscaped," because I knew there would be damage to the property through the tearing out of the chain-link fence and ripping out bushes to build the brick wall and so forth. So that was done, and again, I was quite pleased with the work. There have been some issues. I had a gap left in my fence with the construction of the brick wall where the two would have met, among other things, such as, I know the site plan spoke to the little islands coming down the alley where there's trees. It called for grass and bushes and trees, and as it stands right now, it's rocks and one tree. And I know Dr. Zaden spoke on this a moment ago, as far as trying to keep it, what did you say, like, maintenance-free for the neighborhood. The thing is, and I am, this is leading to something, so if you'll bear with me, it doesn't need to be maintenance-free for the neighbors, it needs to be maintained for the plan, and the plan had called for sprinklers and grass and things like that, and that hasn't been done. And I know that the project's not complete, so I'll give you that. But these are some concerns about the overall site maintenance, if you will. We, as a community, have to look at these things on a daily basis, and I understand that for leasing purposes, you know, I can understand everyone wants covered parking. But the track record, if you will, is that things haven't been quite addressed and maintained and done to plan. And so that gives me, as a neighbor, just some pause on what the short and long-term maintenance issues of such a carport would be as far as, you know, if it collapses or, you know, things like that. So I think those are just the concerns that I wanted to put on the record.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else here to speak on this particular development? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the side of the table for questions, discussions, motions. Mr. Casada?
I have a couple of questions, and probably for the petitioner. The report from the department suggests that the use of the roof space may also be for the tenants in businesses below. Can you speak to that?
I can, actually. And I think, Pete, I didn't expect that type of a prepared remark, Pete, but clearly we've identified, I mean, you know, I'm a sharing guy, so, I mean, you know, to me, it seemed like a great idea, you know, we'd build this thing and then, you know, hey, even the people down below could use it for their lunch breaks. I mean, that was kind of what my thoughts were. But Pete's made it, you know, increasingly clear that, you know, that's not going to happen. I mean, realistically, the type of tenants that are going to want to lease the space are going to be, you know, ones that don't want a lot of different people coming up and from, you know, perspective of, they'd like to have their own storage locker up there and store their own furniture and so on and so forth, and they're, you know, they're not going to want everyone using that. So, you know, that was my first rendition on it. Again, this kind of came to play as the project came up. We didn't really realize what the issues were going to be when we first got site plan approval. We didn't really think about par- We didn't really think about parking. I mean, we knew, we talked so much about the how many parking spaces we need, we didn't talk about the type of parking that we would need for these type of residential components. It wasn't until we started leasing it that we realized that these were great things. The other thing with the roof, you know, I used to live in Chicago, so, you know, I have some experience with that. And, you know, there's a lot of those types of developments where there's a shared rooftop space. So this is designed to be more of an urban type building, like a Chicago type residence.
How, one thing I couldn't tell from here, maybe somebody else could, is how do the tenants access the roof? How do they get up there?
Well, there's an elevator. And I believe that we will ultimately, I mean, that solution's going to have to be, you know, decided on. But we'll have a control door to get up to the roof and probably a lock off on the elevator. The elevator people are going to talk to us about that so that, you know, you can't just go in that space and go anywhere you want in the building.
Okay, I'm a little, I'm a little not.
It's on the third floor. So it's its own separate floor so we can have, you know, defined access to that with a key fob or.
Where does the elevator go? Is it on the alley side? Is it?
On the alley side, yeah.
Okay. And so the people who, if they want to go inside that space, are they going to have to walk across the roof to get there?
Correct. And that's, and that's, again, and that's what I'm, that's what I was trying to get at earlier in that, you know, what we would like to do is create that little corridor when you get off the elevator, create a corridor that comes to it. And then you, you're on a nice, you know, surface. It's a roof, right? And so we feel like the best surface for that, again, looking at from a maintenance perspective, would be, you know, some pavers coming up to that area and then, you know, engineered wood type deck that's not going to, you know, need to be painted, rusting and all those types of things.
All right. So you're still working that out, though?
Yeah, and I think we have it worked out. Bill, can you talk to that?
Yeah.
You know, getting up to it, to give you an idea, take the.
Microphone, please.
Come up to the mic. To the third floor. And when you get off.
Picture yourself in an elevator lobby. Sure. I thought I'd talk loud enough, but anyway. You come into an elevator lobby and you get out of the elevator, there's one door that goes out to the roof. That's the only way that you're going to be able to get into it. Another way to take and get up to that area, we also have an interior stairway, but there's still only one door that allows you to take and go ahead, the hollow metal door, to take and go ahead and get into the roof area. You also have an emergency exterior as far as the stairway is concerned. And that's just in case something happens in any way that you can take and go ahead. Two ways, you can take and go ahead and get back in through the elevator or the stairway, or you have an exterior which happens, a gate door, which is a panic bar, allows you to go through on the outside. And you can't get in going up to that area because it's locked. The only way you can get out of it is through a panic bar. So you have three ways of access of getting off the roof, but only one way to get into the roof area.
Okay, and those tenants, those residential tenants would have to go, they have to go down to the first floor, get into the elevator, go up to the third floor?
No, the second, the elevator goes.
Elevator, third, second floor.
Second floor.
Goes to first floor, second floor, and the roof.
All right.
It currently is there now. You know, that elevator pulpit goes all the way up to the third floor already. And also, you know, in regards to the height, the height of that area, I believe, Bill, you can talk to that, it's higher than what we've proposed to do.
Yes, it is. That's so.
So there is already that height there.
Okay. Is there, is there any irrigation in the islands?
No, there's not. There's piping to it. I mean, it could go there. We just felt like, we, I mean, honestly, we felt like, you know, putting down multiple layers of fabric and putting stone around there was, you know, appealing and it, I wouldn't have ever really thought that that was a large issue. So, you know, I apologize for that. But we didn't feel like it, I mean, it looks appealing to everybody that, everybody that comes, including one of the inspectors, said it was one of the nicest parking lots he thought in Rollo.
I wouldn't argue with it. It looks nice, although the pines on the northwest corner or northeast corner have seemed to have passed away.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I answer that for you?
Yes.
I'm not bad in construction, but I'm too good as a water boy. And what did I do? I had the sod and the trees and everything else, the stone put in when it was 95 degree weather. And believe me, it never stopped at 95. And I just couldn't keep up. My biggest concern was watering all of the pear trees that are in each one of the islands. We are taking the grass that's going in, is at the north end, and we're going to take and, we're just about ready to take and go ahead and do that. We have, I got approved today to take and do my parking lot up in front of the building. And we have a green island and there will be sprinkler system and grass and a tree in that area. But at that time, when I do the landscaping, I'm also going to go ahead and come back and remove all of that sod and replace the sod and replace those trees. So everything will be brand new.
Yeah, and that's already in the, in planning.
Yes.
It's already been, that site, your site plan just got approved for that front corner. Otherwise, it would have been built. We would love to have cleaned that area up a long time ago on Woodward, but we've been waiting on approvals.
They just approved it today.
Okay. One more question? Sure.
I've heard the couple of terms, carport and enclosed parking. To me, those are two different things. Which are?
No enclosed parking.
No, yeah.
No, just a carport.
We wouldn't expect enclosed parking. We just want to have something that will, you know, cover the people's vehicles. And as far as maintenance of those carports, I mean, we plan on making them so that they, you know, are, you know, made of a material that isn't going to rust and, you know, will stand the test of time and also will be architecturally appealing to the site and the building.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, just so you know, it is on the other side of the parking lot, the one facing booking.
Hey Jamie, is your wood okay?
Pardon?
Is the wood okay?
It's closed now.
Very nice to work with. Let's move this meeting going this way, guys. I do have a couple of questions. Tim, could you scroll to the one that has like a yellow highlight on it with the proposed structure? Yeah, that one. There's some, what's written up here around the new structure is there's already existing rooftop terrace that's been approved. Those are the like gray lines there closer to Woodward Avenue. Now, those are second floor terrace extensions of the dwellings that the units already have.
Correct. There was already proposed to be decking up there. It's just that we realized that that's all there's going to be is decking up there and.
So each of these units already have their own terraces on the rooftop?
Well, it's one shared terrace, but they have access to a terrace.
Okay. So in addition to those terraces, you're proposing this common area to that as well?
Right.
Okay.
With a bathroom, because if you think about how you utilize that space, you know, the type of tenant, you know, they're going to want to have a bathroom to go to, they're going to, you know, they're going to want to have a place to store their things, they're going to want to have their own storage closet for their stuff, you know, suntan lotion and so on and so forth for that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Sure.
So I appreciate the fact that you've installed a screening wall along the east side of the property and went to the effort to, excuse me, match the brick of the adjacent homeowner. And I also appreciate the fact that you're landscaping the property of your neighbor to the south, even though that landscaping is on their property. I think those are good gestures. But I'm not going to let this occasion go by to remind you of the inconvenience that you put the city to over the course of two springs. When I would get emails from the adjacent homeowner on Buckingham complaining that the lot hadn't been mowed, we'd send code enforcement out, they'd give you a notice, you wouldn't cut it, our people would come out and cut it. I mean, you said you had trouble cutting it. Well, guess what? City employees had to go out and cope with that mess. And I was not happy, not happy then, and I just thought I would just share my not happiness with you because I've got you here. You also talk about the, and the adjacent homeowner made a very good point. You talk about the ease of maintaining rock islands as opposed to landscape islands because it's easier to maintain them. And she properly points out, it's easy for you to maintain them, it benefits you, but not necessarily the adjacent homeowners who might like to see the greenery that your site plan recalled for. And the fact that you ignored the site plan, I mean, I, what? Oh, well, we thought it would be easier this way. No, you have an approved site plan. It's a legal document with the city. And so, to be clear, anything we do going forward here is going to require all of the elements of that site plan to be executed in that parking lot. And just parenthetically, if we can find a way to not plant pear trees there, we should. Because I try and Bradford pears here, they are an invasive species, they are not a long lasting tree, they're not a desirable landscaping tree. And our city arborist has ideas about the kinds of trees that add to our canopy and Bradford pears aren't on the list. So if I have, if we can legally make you do something else, that's what I'm going to ask you to do. In terms of the carports, it seems to me that we can solve the issue of their intrusion into the right of way by moving them into the center of the property. I don't see any reason why those have to be along Buckingham. They could very easily be part of the center parking spaces in that parking lot. Then we take away the problem with intrusion into the right of way. And I don't think we inconvenience your tenants to any greater degree. So any motion that shows up or even maybe a motion I make is going to include that.
Well, I think the, just, do you want me to respond to that? So I think the only reason that we put the carports there, honestly, was we identified that we needed carports and Krieger Klatt drew them in that location. And because, and I think it was really literally because it was across the, you know, if you were to come out of your car there, you would walk right into your building. And I think it was, I designed mostly for safety. I really wasn't involved in the location of the carports, but, I mean, I think it's fine to move them. I mean, you know, I don't think there's any problem with that.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, closer.
Tim, are there any elevations that were submitted of this proposed extra 15 feet that they're building on top of this building?
I don't believe we included any in the, yeah, I guess.
You have some.
The thing we included were the elevations of the carport.
Looking for those, Tim. This is a two-part or two, we're looking for a special land use first.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have any in there.
Any other questions? Discussion, motion? Ms. Douglas?
I do have another question. Mr. Twain, you refer in this memo to elements which need to be taken to the city commission for approval. What are those elements that would go to the city commission as opposed to just going from us to the ZBA?
Well, the parking lot that is in a one-family residential zone, the residential accessory parking lot is one of the few land uses that requires the city commission action.
I see.
And that's, that's the parking lot that is to the east of the alley. It's associated with the rest of the development, but it's the one portion that requires city commission action.
Thank you.
Those three separate actions, the parking variance, the variance for height and the one that Commissioner Douglas brought up, those would be part of a site plan motion, wouldn't they?
Well, any of the ones that are related to the special land use and residential on the second floor and general businesses as special land use, as we've indicated, they're modifying that special land use, so you would take action on that. That doesn't necessarily need city commission action, but the whole project's tied together so the whole thing will end up there. But what you're doing is granting permission under the special land use for them to seek waivers. You're not actually granting the waivers. If you wanted to reject the special land use, you could do so simply because it doesn't comply. You don't have to allow it to go forward to the zoning board of appeals. So that's where your discretion comes in, is this use something that you feel is appropriate at this site, given the criteria, and allow them to go seek those actual variances. But if you determined it wasn't, then you would simply reject it and it would come to an end.
Thank you.
I do have an elevation if you'd like it, as far as the building.
Sure, bring it up, please.
If you can have it, I got a couple of copies.
Thank you. Mr. Casada?
I guess I wanted a clarification from Mr. Twain. I thought there were really four variances, putting a carport period, putting a carport in the setback, the height of the building, and the 14 space parking variance. And there are four?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so you really, even if you put the parking, carports in the middle, they still need a variance for that?
They would still need a variance to allow them to be in the accessory parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
Wouldn't need a setback one.
The setback one they wouldn't need.
Any other questions? Motion? Ms. Douglas?
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the special land use with allowing the height, allowing the carports, location to be determined, and the residential use. Are those my three things?
Yes, they are. But I wouldn't say allowing, I would say that they could go to seek those variances from the appropriate boards.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
So that would be my motion.
Okay. Mr. Casada?
Residential use is one of the, I thought, again, that's why I looked for clarification.
That was the one that goes to city commission for residential parking lot to be used in this area.
My read is she's going to ask that the carports get moved, so that fourth variance is not, not.
But residential use on the second floor is not before, so.
Residential parking lot in this area is the.
Residential parking lot.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Support, but Mr. Klooster, any further discussion on this? We're just at the special land use portion. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have a special land use. Now we're moving on to site plan. Do you want to talk more about this, Mr. Twain?
Well, I do want clarification on primarily the landscape portion of the original site plan and what the planning commission wants versus what the petitioner has installed or requested. As you saw in the report and in the site plan report, the landscape plan is basically up on the screen in front of you as submitted. The primary difference from what the petitioner has indicated to staff is that they would like to keep the gravel islands rather than putting in sod and grass in those areas. I'm not aware of any indication in reducing the number of trees or the types of trees or the shrubs that were indicated in that regard. So staffs, if you approved the landscape plan or the submitted landscape plan, the only change in it would be to allow the gravel rather than the sod. If you want sod to go back, then I would ask that you include that as part of your action. That's the only item I'm aware that they've asked for revision on.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions on site plan? Mr. Casada?
Just clarify, because I thought I heard two different things there. Gravel remaining in the islands, not gravel remaining in the northeast corner outside the walls. That's going to be grass?
Correct.
And that's going to be irrigated?
We have piping to go to irrigate it. So I wasn't planning on doing it because I thought we'd water it throughout the time and get it, you know, get it so it took hold. And the last thing I want is dead grass in front of our building, but, you know, the rest of, you know, there's a park right across the street, it's not irrigated, I mean, you know, those types of things. So, you know, I believe that, you know, that's a small little strip of property there. I mean, it's only probably like, how three feet wide. So, you know, I hadn't planned on irrigating that. No, I did not. I didn't even know if that was on the site plan, to be honest with you. If it is, I didn't see it, so.
Usually have two or three follow-ups, Gary.
Well, I just, it was irrigation of this area on the original site plan, which I don't know that we have in front of us, except up on the screen.
Right, yes.
It was, okay. So it was already in there?
But it's not, it's not an ordinance requirement. I think he's already.
It was part of our site plan.
Right.
Okay. And so, I guess myself, I would make the comment, I can understand the islands. The islands are very tough to make them grow.
Well, it's so hot, right? The concrete's so hot, it's always.
You could do it with a lot of irrigation, but I think that's probably less important less important than the area that's facing the neighbors in the street, which is in that northwest corner, which I think should be irrigated and it should be grass and the trees should be alive. So I think that part should, should stay in the, in the plan.
Thank you, Gary. I have a question for Ms. Douglas. I agree with your suggestion on moving the, the covered parking. Did you have a feel for where you'd like to see it slid over or?
I would give them the flexibility. I mean, they're in the center of the parking lot. You've got one, eight or nine spaces. I would just put those carports in the center of that lot so that they're not, they're not part of the view for the neighbor to the south or the neighbor to the east and they're not intruding in the right of way on the north. And I, I mean, I give that to the discretion to the builder as to where in that section they put them.
But it couldn't be on the property line in Buckingham, is what you're.
Right. And if you leave the island in that center section where it is, obviously that has some control or effect on where they put them.
I guess to restrict that, we didn't, when we did the special land use, we took away the option of, of being into the setback on Buckingham. But if we leave it entirely up to them, they might just push it four feet back into the parking lot and be in compliance.
No, what I'm saying is it needs to be one of the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parking spaces that are in the smack dab in the center of that parking lot and not around the perimeter.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Motion? Where are we at? I'm sorry, Gary.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification. So we, by our previous vote, we precluded them from being where they are now. Is that what you're saying? Is that correct?
Well, the carports cannot be in the required setback based on your prior. So they, they have to be placed out of that required setback. Given that this will go to the commission, I think what we'll do is have them place it pursuant to that before the commission acts on it, the city commission.
Right.
All right. And the setback is, is.
The setback is 25 feet from the property line along Buckingham. So they'll have to be out of this parking row and obviously they can't be in the drive lane. So they'll have to be somewhere other than in the required setback.
Excuse me, but.
And I think if you make the motion that they be in the center island, it'll be one of those, four of those nine spots.
Ms. Douglas, are you saying that you want those parking spots into that center area where he's got the row right now?
Well, the, the carports are going to end up somewhere in here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any problem with that. We just, I mean, people just need covered parking. We would, I can tell you that if we had the choice, and I think Peter would tell you that, we would want to put it more towards, we would want to put it in those spaces, four spaces there that are close to the Buckingham side.
Close to the building.
Yeah, just because that's where the entrance is for the, for the, you know, the people.
About 10 feet to walk.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, the homeowner doesn't want to walk across if they don't have to too much.
One of the other things that I agreed with that I heard was the use of pear trees. I had two of those planted in the right of way on my home and both of them came down within five years. They, they don't develop a root structure that can support their own weight, which you, I don't know if you have them all in there, but I'd like to see those something else.
Okay, I mean.
So have they been planted there?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in, in all honesty, we called a landscape crew and this sounds, I'm not trying to make excuses. We called a landscape crew. They, they drew a landscape plan. Bill was running this project and, and they, they chose this. And I looked at it and I said, it looks great to me. I really didn't take it to this level of, of specificity, so.
So they are planted there?
Yeah, they're planted.
All right, so I'm not going to make people tear them out. You'll have to do it yourself when they die.
Right. Yeah. And fall on the cars, but it's okay.
Yeah, and smell.
So we're looking for a motion at this point.
Well, these aren't, aren't the type, they're not fruit pairing pears.
No, they're not.
No.
No, but they're.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. Approve the site plan with the conditions that they move the carports to that center island. I'm going to say okay to the stones or gravel that you've got in the islands now, that the, that you install irrigation in the right of way along Buckingham. And I have no, I have no problem with, I mean, we're calculating a parking requirement for the rooftop terrace. I mean, it's clear to me that that's only going to be used by residents and I'm not worried that, you know, it's going to place extra demands on your parking. So I would authorize you to, it's the ZBA to get the parking variance, right, Mr. Twing?
Yeah, you, you did that in the last.
Okay, okay.
On your motion, are there other contingencies, standard contingencies that you listed out?
Oh, and the standard contingencies, yeah.
Did you also list out one through 11, I think, or?
Yep.
Okay. And you including those in your motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you. We have a motion. Is there support?
I have a question.
We have a question.
We're, as part of the motion, we're asking them to install all the landscape per the plan. What we're allowing them to revise from the original plan, which is on the new plan, is to change from mulch or sod to the stone islands.
Yes.
Into three islands or four islands, I think.
Okay, then I will support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
You so much. We hope to make a great space.
Moving on, item number two is withdrawn. Mr. Twing?
Yes, the petitioner asked for it to be postponed until the next meeting.
Okay, then we're on to number three, SP 181027 amendment to site plan to install vinyl fence instead of masonry screening wall along south through lot line of four-unit multiple family dwelling on 414. Mr. Twing?
Again, the planning. Commission members may have, may recall that you saw the development and site plan approval on this site back in 2015. It was actually for a three-story, eight-unit building with some variances where necessary from the zoning board of appeals. Only, at the end, only four units were constructed. The petitioner did modify the site plan for those four units and the site layout. In doing so, the south part of the property was converted from parking lot to a substantial landscape setback area. And the petitioner is asking that the planning commission consider allowing a vinyl fence versus what was required back then in terms of a six-foot masonry fence along that south property line. I believe they've also installed a similar vinyl fence along the east and west property lines, even though one's not required at those, those locations. That's really the request in front of you. They're asking to modify that portion of prior contingency.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Twing at this time? Seeing none, is the petitioner here to speak on this?
Yep.
Tell us who you are. Why it's, why is vinyl better than stone?
My name's Corey Jacoby with DM Homes Metro Detroit. As was pointed out earlier, the east and west side of our property was not required to have a fence. We have put in a vinyl fence on the east and west from the back of the lot to the front of the building, which is within code in zoning. Our neighbors to the west, which is multi-family, backs up to the residential, does have a vinyl fence in the back and then also has a masonry wall on the side. If you look at why one's been another, aesthetics, it, the masonry wall is not residential. It looks terrible and, you know, it colors, it fades, it has stains on it. It's a commercial application. And, you know, when we went through this site planning, we did not have a 25-foot buffer that we do now. Cars are not parked right up to the lot line into the fence. We have, you know, I think included in the package, letters from our neighbor to the east, to the north, and to the east, you know.
The woods.
And, excuse me, to the west in favor. These, when we went in for site plan for the eight units, they were going to be apartments. We have since, you know, modified it and it became a four-unit complex and it's condos. Three of the units are sold and, you know, we have letters in there from our, our buyers and residents that are in favor of this. And so that's kind of why we're asking to modify it.
Great, sounds good. Any questions for the petitioners? Ms. Douglas?
Do you know that you're on Google Street View?
I hope that's good.
You're a celebrity on Google.
Honestly, if you look at this site, you, yeah, you, you're standing right here. At least, we're pretty sure it's you.
He's going to start asking for royalty.
You have a Dodge Ram truck?
You know, it's your back.
That's you, then.
Usually, yeah, usually, you know, they'll blur out people's faces, but you're kind of, you sort of got your back turned, but Mayor Fournier spotted you.
Don't worry, it's your good side.
Oh, no, I have a good side.
Any questions about the fencing or a motion?
I have a question. Is there, and is there proposed landscaping in that buffer, that 25-foot buffer that exists now that the building got substantially smaller?
Oh, absolutely. We had to put seven honey locust tree skyline variety. And so that's there. Then it does, we didn't know what to do if we're doing masonry fence or a vinyl fence, so it does get grass over there, but we didn't want, we haven't installed that yet because if, depending which way you go, it's going to tear everything up, so. But I do have Great Lakes landscaping ready to go for the side.
Mr. Kasada?
Question for the petitioner. I've been out to the site. I've looked at it. I, I understand it's quite different than it was when it first came before us with the buffer there. And I see the trees are planted and I see the grass is not planted, but there's a lot of space there now that wasn't there before. You said, and I didn't see this when I was out there because I didn't look, you're saying that the neighbor to the west between the two houses is a vinyl fence?
West, that, well, let's see. Yes, that, well, we put a vinyl fence there. We did that.
You put a vinyl fence between you and the neighbor, but the.
Right.
Neighbor to the west, their south lot line, is that a vinyl fence?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well.
And then if you go further, one more over where the clinic is to the west, that is a masonry fence.
All right, thank you.
We had such positive response when we put in the two side fences from the neighbors that were affected by having a fence there and by the people in the building and by the lady that lives in the southeast part of the lot that, I mean, she, she calls me every two or three weeks to see, you know, are you going to put in a white fence for me? That, so.
You mentioned, somebody mentioned that there were letters. I didn't see any letters in the package. Was there letters?
There should be letters with it, yes.
You should have. We had all of them, they all, there's five, two people that live in the building, the person to the east, the person to the west, and the one lady in back of the building. They all signed this petition letter thing that I wrote up. You should have.
I'm afraid I don't have it, but, okay. Regardless, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment. I've been out to the site. I'm convinced that this is an appropriate amendment. The masonry fence is, is a little bit of overkill at that point, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the amendment.
You have a motion to approve. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So you got a vinyl fence. Thank you, sir.
There you go. Thank you. Good luck.
Go check yourself out, man.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Make it your profile picture on Facebook or something.
Right, I think that might resonate, though.
There you go.
Enough of this Tom Pooleery. Call us meeting in order.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you again. All those people will really appreciate what you've done.
It'll make a nice addition to the area. It'll look nice.
Take care, guys. Thanks. All right, we're moving on to E, other business, assigned variance request or replace a wall. Sign for a coffee house, Starbucks at 300 South Main Street, parcel 2521-23407 with variances. Mr. Twing?
You do have the staff report in front of you and, as well as the building department's denial letter. They're proposing to install a new sign that exceeds the limit for the east facade or the facade that faces Main Street by some 33.17 square feet over the maximum allowed signage. You'll also notice that the sign technically extends beyond the corner of the building and wraps around the building, so that's the second variance that's required in that the sign ordinance doesn't allow signs to extend in that fashion. Those are the two variances that are in front of you this evening from the petitioner.
Any questions for Mr. Twing at this point? Seeing none, is the petitioner here?
Good evening. My name is Paul Dieters. I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, 11444 Colts Avenue in Warren. Thank you for considering our case this evening. I'll try to be very brief. The, the purpose for coming here before you this evening is Starbucks has asked us to help with redesigning their existing sign. There's a perforated metal background that's on that right now that looks a little dated and it almost just looks a little dirty, if you will. And they'd asked us for, to put something up there that's going to look a little bit sleeker, that will tie in with the awnings that are on the adjacent side elevation and to provide a little bit better contrast against the building. The signage that we're proposing is to take the exact letters that are there right now and the logo that's there right now. So nothing in terms of the, the letter size is going to change, nor is the, the size of the backdrop that goes behind it going to change. The existing one is two feet, five inches tall that's there right now between the raceway and the perforated metal panel. We're going to have the exact same dimensions. It's just going to be a black background that'll just look a little bit more modern. That's what we're hoping to do. And in regards to, to wrapping around the corner, the existing sign does that as well. It's just, to tell you the truth, it just, it looks a little bit neater to do that. It was sort of a nice design element. They've got a short elevation there going on the side street. They were going to put the logo there. It ties the logo in with the front sign if there's some sort of a common backdrop that would go between them. And that was really the, the hope there is that we could just continue or maintain that look. Thank you.
Is the, I'm sorry, I just, is this going to be backlit? From the pictures, it looks like it's glowing.
No, it's, it's internally illuminated. It's the exact letters that are there right now. We're going to bring them back to our shop. We're going to take them off what, what they are on right now, clean them and put them back up exactly as they are.
To their front.
So, so they are, there's, there's internally illuminated LED lighting. It's not a back halo wash or anything like that.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Are they a timer or are they lit right now?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I just know some of these LED backlights can get like really, you know, we could light up half of Main Street if you put those up to.
Right.
Full intensity and stuff.
I understand. They are, they're, they're white translucent faces, so I don't think that these are of the variety that are glaring or screaming at you by name and fact.
We're not doing anything with the illumination. We're leaving it as is.
Probably, can you, probably see it right now if we.
Yeah. Like you're saying right now.
You're not, you're not increasing the lumens or anything like that.
No, we're not doing anything with the lighting.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. I got my questions answered. It looks, it looks like an improvement to me.
Yeah.
Ms. Douglas?
I have a question for Mr. Twing. So with the current sign, what percentage of the frontage is it?
Of the existing one?
Yes.
I'm just going to go based on the numbers submitted. It looks like it's 65.45 square feet.
So, I mean, the, the size of it won't change from what it is now. They're not asking for anything bigger. Somewhere along the line, we allowed them to have a sign larger than the ordinance permits?
That's a possibility. The way the sign. That's a possibility. The way the sign ordinance is set up, there is no nonconformity, though. So, you have to comply when you submit.
Mr. Kasana?
I'm a little confused by that. Is that mesh background counted as part of the sign?
It may have been. I don't know. I didn't evaluate the existing sign.
Okay. Questions or a motion? Ms. Douglas and Gary are fighting over who makes a motion here?
Go ahead.
Well, I'll just say, I want to concur with Mr. Godak. Yes, this is definitely aesthetically an improvement, and I would move to grant the variance.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 You have your variance.
Terrific.
Looks nice. Thank you very much.
Expect coffee samples next time.
See you later.
Got a bunch of miscellaneous stuff here at the bottom. Mr. Twing?
Yep, we're just looking for action on the meeting schedule for 2019. As our standard practice, we give you potential conflicts. And then, if you want to stick with your second Tuesday of the month, we've provided you with a resolution at the bottom.
So, you're looking for a motion to approve?
I am looking for a motion to approve your meeting schedule.
Anybody want to make that?
So moved.
Mr. Clooster moves that. Is there support?
Second.
Second by Ms. Douglas. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Five-year review?
What we're looking for here, I think, is just some cleanup resolution. As you'll recall, the planning commission sent a recommendation to the city commission. The city commission decided to postpone distribution and funding for an RFP and master plan until a later date. Given that, staff is looking that the planning commission take a similar action, and we've provided you with a suggested resolution at the end of the staff report.
Okay. Are we discussing this, or are you just looking for a motion, or what's going on here?
I'm just looking for a motion.
Me, too. Ms. Douglas?
I'll make the motion. We approve the resolution as submitted, and then I'll speak to the motion.
If you get support.
Support.
And you got support.
So, I mean, just politics being politics, I didn't have the votes at the commission table to go through with a master plan update this year. There's concern that come spring, we're going to be implementing a new stormwater ordinance that's going to, A, take up a lot of staff time, B, require a lot of public communication and input and knowledge, and the commission did not feel that the city had the bandwidth, as it were, to update our master plan this year. No commission can direct the action of a subsequent commission, but I've got pinky swears around the table that in 20, thank you, Mayor, that in 2019, we will revisit this subject, issue a request for proposals to consulting firms, and go forward with a master, a limited scope master planning process, as the planning commission has previously discussed.
Good. Any, Mr. Clooster?
So, when 2019 rolled, do we have to wait till 2022 to look at this again? You said pinky swear 2019. Does the city commission have to start that process?
We have to spend the money. So, we need to put it in the 2019, 2019, 1920 budget. So, that'll be in our budget discussions in the spring. That's the crucial time. And then, once that budget is approved, then we can go forward to hire the consultants.
Now, this is in the future, if you get what you want, right?
Right.
Okay. Got it.
And the resolution was intended to, if the commission does that prior to 2022, then we'll go forward with the RFP and move out, move forward with it. If the city commission doesn't, we'll bring, staff will bring it back in 2022 as part of the five-year review. So, that's why we had that date in there.
Right. So, if the city commission doesn't put this in the budget for next year, we don't have a chance to say, hey, we need to do this until 2022?
Well, that's when I would bring it back under the five-year review. I think if the planning commission convinced the city commission to do it prior to 2022, we'd do it at that point in time. But if that doesn't occur, then no, it wouldn't happen. I think you got a question over there.
Mr. Kasana, I'm sorry.
A question for Mr. Twing, me being the lawyer, but I don't know this answer. So, by not taking action here and postponing this, the Enabling Acts is every five years we're supposed to look at it. Can we look at it and then postpone it, and are we in compliance with the Enabling Act?
Yes. Yeah, we think that we're, we've looked at it. You've studied it. The city commission's gone back and forth. I mean, we've been discussing this since 2017, which was the five-year review period. And as long as you're going through that process, I think you're in compliance. What you say and do is up to you as the planning commission.
All right, thanks.
So, we don't have a lot of choice here.
Well, if the commission doesn't fund it, there's not much of a way to get it done.
I got it now. Thanks. Any further discussion? So, we have a motion and support to accept this resolution. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. And you have some administrative site plan approvals to talk about?
Well, those are just for your information, ones that have been signed off on staff that have gone on to building permits.
Good job. Lots of development.
Way to take a leadership role, Mr. Twing.
There's so many. And this is for our info. No action required.
Yeah, no, there's no action.
It's a lot of work. On a serious note, it is a lot of work. I think you and the team do a good job, should be said.
He's community development director. So, that being it for the meeting, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Clooster's support.
Support.
Or by Gary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.